Welcome, everybody, to the St. Louis Park School Board meeting for May 12th, 2014. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We are going to start the meeting with a spotlight, and I'm really excited that our spotlight is going to be the 2014 History Day finalists. My sister heard something on C-SPAN, whatever, and it was some very exciting history professor who said, "I don't need reality TV. I have history."[35.04][35.04](Laughter) And if you do history right, that's what you have. You have amazing stories that just unfold. And so today, we're going to honor our 2014 History Day finalists. We're going to -- I want to start by introducing Carly Kregness, one of our teachers. She has won the Senior Division Teacher of Merit for 2014 for the Minnesota History Day, which is just a wonderful honor, and we are so proud.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to say just a word about the award that I won. It was great, and it was wonderful to win that award, but I want to say that a lot of the students that placed high at State were not necessarily in my class. And I was honored to win the award, and I know it's partly for running this program here at St. Louis Park, as well as working with kids, but I also want to recognize that Jeff Cohen did great work with a lot of these students, and Jean Schaefer also was a great teacher in History Day, and other teachers over the years have made this program at St. Louis Park what it is. And many students have come through it, so thanks to them as well.[103.25][103.25](Applause) So we have a lot of students to introduce here tonight, which is wonderful, and congratulations to all of them. I want to tell you a little bit about what they did. All these students showed a great amount of hard work and dedication for being here, both in their research, in learning the history, in their historical skills, and then in their presentation. And they were all judged at least three times in order to get here. They placed in the top finishers in our school History Day, which had about 240 students competing in it in various events. And then, from there, they went to the regional competition, which is essentially the west metro area, and it's a senior division means it's a high school competition, so it's ninth through 12th grade. And from there, they placed in the top in order to get to the state event. And State History Day was about 10 days ago, a week ago Saturday, and all these students competed there, and we had a fantastic showing at State. An amazing number of them placed and received medals and awards, so I'll tell you exactly what they did. Rand Phillips first competed in Exhibits. Is Rand here tonight? Okay, well, he also made it to the state meet, so, yeah.[186.62][186.62](Applause) Then we had a group of three girls, Julia, Nathan, Gabby Miller, and Dani Campos. Are they here? Want to come up? Okay. They received honorable mention in Exhibits.[205.12][205.12](Applause) And I want to say that in order to receive honorable mention, they finished -- the exact number depends on the event, but in general, that means between about sixth and ninth place is honorable mention at the State History Day. We have another group for Exhibits received an honorable mention, Zoe Luther and Madison Vignis.[232.34][232.34](Applause) Come on up. Sorry, I know I'm not going in order, because I'm doing them together. Just you're doing it right now. Okay, great. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Come right up here. And then you'll get a picture of all of you. Okay. The next one that I want -- the next person that I want to recognize received two awards at the State History Event. She received honorable mention for her exhibit, and she also received a special award, the top prize, topical prize in women's history, and that's Ket Key Huddling.[282.58][282.58](Applause) Then we had two groups or individuals placed in first and second place. First and second place means that they have qualified for the national event that will be held in Washington, D.C. in June. The first group is two girls received second place for their website, Allison Kramer and And finally, also placing second place and qualifying for the national event with his There, there. I knew I signed goodbye. There we go. So thanks very much for taking time to recognize these great students and all their hard work, and congratulations to them.[375.03][375.03](Applause) Could we have all their parents stand up?[384.59][384.59](Applause) Thank you. Thank you from them and from us and from the teachers for supporting them as they worked through this long and difficult process, and congratulations.[400.72][400.72](Applause)
Can you swing it over to this chair a little bit, so we can go in from that door? Or chair and Carly? Should I go on this end? We have to double the row, or can you get us to that one row? I can get you over. Want more? Can you, um, so just hold up your certificates?
Now we're there.
Thank you. Everybody, our parents feel free. Okay, well done, everybody.[448.03][448.03](Applause)
I just wanted to add that I went to History Day at the state competition this year, and they competed against -- this is an immense event on the university campus. Great hall, the entire third floor of Kaufman Union filled with exhibits and all the papers. I didn't get to the other buildings where the websites and performances are. The entire campus was filled with students. It was really exciting. I love skimming through the papers and looking at all the exhibits. I did not pick out the St. Louis Park one, but it's still amazing. It was impressive, the scope of the event, and to think that out of those still thousands of competitors, we had so many that finished in those top groups is really impressive.[495.69][495.69](Applause)
I'd just like to add one more thing before you go. My son, who was trained by Carly, was a history major at Grinnell College. He is gainfully employed today, so parents have no fear. History majors get jobs.[521.03][521.03](Laughter)
Thank you, Maryelle.
And what you maybe didn't hear at home is there were over 1,000 competitors, so we did really well with as many students that scored so well, so well done, everybody.
Thank you, Maryelle. This is, thank you. Thank you for coming.
So now, we'll move on to our approval of the agenda, and this is our agenda tonight. We're going to start with the superintendent's report, and then our study session topics will be Community Education Annual Report, the Digital Learning Update, the Teacher Tenure Evaluation Plan Discussion, the Policy Development First Reading of Policies 417, Chemical Use and Abuse, and 419, Tobacco-Free Environment. And then the second reading will be Policy 412, Expense Reimbursement. Then we will have the consent agenda, and our action items tonight are approval of the second reading of Policy 412, Expense Reimbursement, approval of a tentative contract, the CAPS, which is the Clerical Secretilly Association of Park Schools contract, approval of the tentative contract for community education coordinators, and approval of the tentative contract Sparks, which is our support personnel assisting and reaching kids. After that, we will have communications and transmittals, followed by adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as read?
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. Let's start with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, board members and Chair Gores. I wanted to highlight a couple of things that are going to be going on in the school district. The first, this summer, for the first time in my memory, we are going to be holding a professional development academy for our teachers. We'll have a three-day professional development academy. I'll pass these down the line here after I speak, so you can see what this is. But three days for teachers from across the district to come together and learn together. It'll be the first full week in August, and we created an agenda of staff development and professional development activities for our teachers to take part in. I think it's the start of a great thing, first time ever, but probably not the last time. One of the things we've discovered is there's so much to learn and so much professional development to do as a teacher, and there's just not enough time during the year. So we're going to take three days in the summer, and our teachers will come in and take part in professional development early in August. There'll also be one day for principals, too. So one day for principals, three days for teachers. Another thing that we're working on to fully develop our teachers is working with Concordia College to offer a reading endorsement program for teachers who would like to take part in that. The benefits of that is we can have that offered on campus here. Our teachers can take part of it, take part in it, and again, just looking for ways to develop capacity in our teachers without relying on the short amounts of time that we have during the school day, during the school year, to do that. So I wanted to highlight that and just let people know that really, for us to reach our full potential as a district, we're doing extremely well already, but to continue to improve and get better really lies in the hands of the individual teachers. The hearts first and the hands of the individual teachers. So our work to fully develop them and give them every opportunity to take part in outstanding professional development is a top priority. You're going to see tonight a presentation by a group of teachers who've been working on the teacher evaluation system, and that has a connection to all of this professional development as well. So I think some good steps forward for us. The other thing I wanted to mention quickly is there was a band concert Thursday night, and Karen, I saw an email that you passed on that you might be speaking to this later. I'll just say quickly, in my many years of working in schools, this was one of the best organized and well-run and top-notch music programs that I have ever attended. And I'll leave some space for Karen to speak more about that later, but an outstanding job by our director, Steve Schmitz. One quick highlight is we had -- it was senior recognition night, and 31 seniors in the band this year were recognized. Having 31 seniors in a high school band is pretty amazing, and hearing the caliber and quality of the music was -- I saw the middle school band director there, Randy Moore, and I went back to talk to him and said, "Randy, every concert I hear just gets better and better and better and better," and this one is no exception. So congratulations to Steve, and I'll let Karen speak more about that later.
Thank you, Rob. This is our May 12th meeting, so I will say at the outset, and then we'll probably say again at the end of this, that on May 13th, which is tomorrow, there's a special election in St. Louis Park and in parts of Minneapolis. Gail Dorfman retired or resigned from her role in the Hennepin County Commission, and the final decision on who will replace Gail is going to be made tomorrow by the voters. So I would encourage people who are watching to get out and vote tomorrow. The Hennepin County Commission plays a role in the county, but it also plays a role in our school district, because we do sometimes apply to them for grants. We interact with them on other issues, and so it's a group that matters to us, as I'm sure it matters to those of you watching at home. So next, the first study session topic is Community Education Annual Report, and we're going to hear from Lisa Green. And I have to say, Lisa, I was out and about in the community, and I was hearing glowing feedback about you and your work, so I want to pass that along.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that. Always makes me feel good, way to start out a presentation. So thank you, Chair Gores, Superintendent Metz, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to quickly go through the highlights of what has been going on in community education for the last year and talk about maybe some things that we've got coming up. And then, we chose to highlight our volunteer program this year, so I'll be calling up Linda Ashy and Barb Bloom at the end of my presentation. They're going to talk a little bit about our volunteer program. Starting with our Early Childhood Program. Forty years ago, the Minnesota State Legislature voted to provide funding for early childhood family education programs in school districts across Minnesota, so we are celebrating 40 years of ECFE in our schools, and of course, St. Louis Park was on the cutting edge of that. Now, more locally, starting now with St. Louis Park, in the fall, this last fall of 2013, we blended our PALS, PALS Plus, First Steps, and School Readiness Programs into Early Learning III, Early Learning IV, Early Learning V, and multi-age classes. And we did that in order to make things easier for parents, also to be able to serve more students of color and high-needs students, and to offer students an education or an experience that more mimic -- that will mimic what they will experience when they get to kindergarten. So we have special ed and family ed teachers co-teaching kids that, you know, of all different abilities. And we've gotten great feedback on that this year from the teachers. They have really enjoyed this model that we have created, and we are able to serve more high-needs families with this model. One of the issues, though, that we've had is that by doing this, we are actually down in our tuition revenue, so we have to figure out how we're going to bring that back up, because we have to get tuition revenue in order to be able to serve kids. We get some money from the state, but it doesn't even come close to covering our costs. Oh, oh, yes, I just wanted to say, too, that we did continue with our consistent curriculum assessments across all of our program areas in early childhood, and that includes Kids' Place as well. We became four-star Parent-Aware rated, which is the highest rating you can get from the state, and because we have that rating now in our early childhood programs, we are eligible for Pathway scholarships. Last year, we are eligible for Pathway I, and that's where the parents choose to go and ask for money, and then they come to our program. Well, we got one Pathway I scholarship in Kids' Place. We had 13 in the pipeline, and they ran out of money. So we got one. But, good news is, we did get Pathway II scholarships, was offered more in forms of a -- in a form of a grant. So we have $35,000 that we'll be using for our summer school program this summer. And then we'll see, we're really prepared now for next year to really start going for those Pathway I scholarships. And we are early -- we had early learning staff participating on the All-Day Kindergarten Task Force, which was great, because that really helps us to understand and be prepared to serve families and for us to know what is ready for kindergarten in St. Louis Park. It was a great experience for all of our staff that participated in that. And coming up for 2014-15, we have a family learning program that's been going on in this district for quite a number of years, and that is our collaboration with Adult Options. And we are changing that up a bit, because that is a very, very expensive program. It's a great program, and we've had great teachers, Cindy Peterson and Kim Russell, who've been working in that program, and have developed great relationships with the families, immigrant families and things like that. It's been wonderful. But we can't afford to continue the program at the level that it's at, so we're going to do a few things, but we're hoping through this process that we'll actually be able to serve more families. And as part of that, too, we want to really work on our parent education and our parent engagement and engage more parents in the programs, and so that -- so parents feel more connected to St. Louis Park schools. Kids' Place, our Early Childhood and School Age Care Program, received the NACY accreditation. NACY stands for National Association for Education of the Young Child. It was a big deal. It's a lot of work to get this accreditation, and they worked very hard to get it. And I have to say that last summer, when we had a bit of -- still a bit of a crossover with Dr. Bowers and Superintendent Metz, and they both came to a Kids' Place staff meeting with the banner and balloons to -- and the staff didn't know, it was a surprise to them. And to tell them that they -- we got the accreditation, and I'm not kidding, staff members were weeping, they were so happy. So it was a big deal. And we are one of two school-based childcares in the state of Minnesota that has this accreditation. So I just like to say we're awesome like that.[1245.33][1245.33](Applause) Thank you. And in Kids' Place, we've -- they started a year-before kindergarten program that became so popular, they had to add another classroom. People really wanting to get their kids ready for kindergarten in our programs, and that's really great. And this summer, Julie Rappaport is coming to -- she's already starting to work with our kids on a nomadic greenhouse project, and if you go over to Central and Lenox, you may see a whole bunch of straw bales, and you may wonder what those are all about. Well, in a couple months, they will be just flowing with beautiful greenery and flowers and crops and things like that, so it's going to be great. Our Youth Services Program, as you know, Charlie McChesney moved over to the middle school, and we have really been able to increase our collaboration between the school and community education to the point now where kids aren't like, we don't have this program here and this program here and this program here. Kids are able to register for all non-athletic programs through community education there now, so that's increased some participation. And we've increased the number of middle school teachers who want to teach after school, and that is great, because that really helps build those relationships between the kids and the teachers, also increases participation, because they like to take classes that their teachers are teaching. And Summer Learning and Play, I talked about this a month ago or so, but we changed the name back to Summer Learning and Play from Summer Spark because of the confusion with the Sparks Counseling Program. And this summer, we've -- we continue to increase our offerings, and we have an additional week this summer, and we have more targeted services offerings. In our YDC Youth Development Committee, Charlie has separated those out, where they used the middle school and high school used to all meet together, now they meet separately in their schools, which has increased participation. So they only get together now about twice a year to meet all together, but it's really because it's much more convenient for them to meet at school. And he's establishing youth leadership roles, so they have -- they're more empowered to create their own projects, and so this, I really like the direction this is going, because it's taking it away from just like, it's from just youth service to youth development, where they're planning their own activities and things like that. And youth participation in the park, this actually is initiated by Andy Ewald in the Athletic Department. He came to me and Jason West, who works for St. Louis Park Recreation Program, because he is looking at how do we increase the participation of our high-needs students or students of color in our extracurricular and athletic programs at the high school, and he realized that really, in order to do that, you have to start much younger. And so we're -- we, the three of us got together, and we're going to have a brainstorming session next week on May 21st. We've invited about 30 to 35 people to come from all over, our youth associations and, you know, from community ed, from the library. I mean, all, Karen's coming, and all kinds of people are coming to this. So as we talk about how do we change up some of the ways we do things in order that kids -- make it easier for kids to start participating in sports and extracurricular activities at a younger age. And I thought I'd also add, too, that the St. Louis Park Family Services Collaborative is working on a youth connection. There's lots of different organizations in St. Louis Park that are doing youth work, but they weren't talking to each other and weren't coming together. So there's been a couple meetings around that, people in St. Louis Park coming together to talk about what are we doing for youth in St. Louis Park. And actually, at the last meeting, brought in some people from Brooklyn Park, because Brooklyn Park has a huge program going on over there, and it's a partnership with the police department. And John Luce was at this meeting, too, and very interested in what Brooklyn Park is doing and what we might be able to do here in St. Louis Park. And I'm just going to say this bragging, my son was one of the people who came over from Brooklyn Park to talk about it. Some kind of proud mom about that. Moving on to adult programs, our Adult Options in Education Program in January of this year moved over from paper, and this is nationwide. They changed the GED test from a paper test to an online test, and the hard cutoff was December 31st. If a student did not have all parts of that test completed by December 31st in their paper format, they were going to have to start all over again doing it on the computer. So it was a lot of activity in December, getting students through their GED testing, and then setting up a testing site. And the testing site for us is in Eisenhower Community Center, and that was no easy task to set that up, but it's up and running now. And so what Adult Options is doing is they've been restructuring their classes to help students prepare better for the online, the computer-based GED test, and to improve their critical thinking skills. And the federal government is actually, I'm looking at the last bullet now, the federal government is really all about workforce development through, you know, through adult basic education and has grants available. So we got a fast-track grant to provide skills training for our students to either go to post-secondary school or develop job skills in the health and then manufacturing. And the benefit of that is, to our students, they have to apply for this. It's a big deal, because they get to go to either Hennepin Tech or North Hennepin for free, and they still get benefit of being in our program and getting all that assistance from their teachers in our program to help them make that transition over into post-secondary school. So it's been a great program, and I hope we can continue to receive grants from the federal government to continue that. And our adult and senior programs have actually started working more together to provide more seamless presentation of adult and senior classes. You've probably noticed in the community education catalog, they, we put adult and senior programs together, so it kind of becomes like either you can go at night or during the day, whichever is more convenient for you. And so that's been going well for us. That is, got us some, netted out some additional participation. In our senior program, our Advisory Council is working on a plan to determine, or to try to figure out how to attract more newly-retired baby boomers, and it's something that's actually going on nationwide, certainly not just St. Louis Park, is we try to figure out how to tap into people, what do people who are newly-retired or getting close to retirement, what do they want to see in a program for them, and what kind of services or activities would they like to do. And of course, our construction through the bond referendum will start at Lenox next year after the Waffle Dinner in the end of September. I'm not sure exactly when it's going to start, but we will be moving the office up to the front of the building and having all kinds of a domino effect about where things are going to be happening in that building, and we're bringing our kitchen up to code. So we're all really excited about that. And now, does anybody have any questions on any of that stuff that I just said? Ken?
Sorry, I need you back to it here. Okay, the question I had was in regards to the Part Way I?
Oh, Pathway?
Pathway I, thank you. Can't read my own writing. You had mentioned that we missed it last year. Was it because they were applied late, or we just didn't qualify for them?
Well, okay, no, we qualified. But what happened was, the state, it's a fairly complicated process and a lot of paperwork and things that have to be filled out. And we have to actually do this through, it's not through the Department of Ed, it's through an organization called Think Small. And so as we were trying to get, like, how are we supposed to do this in gathering information? Well, we did gather a lot of information and figure out how we're supposed to get families to apply for the money, because the money has to be applied for by the family, not by us. So we had one family that took the initiative and applied for it to go to Kids' Place, and that's the one scholarship that we got. Then we found out that we could actually assist families in doing this. So we had one of our staff people work with 13 families to assist them in filling out all the paperwork and things like that, so we got all of that ready to go, and this was in February. was in February, and we're about ready to send that in, and they said, oh, don't bother, we ran out of money. So that's what happened, that's why we only got one scholarship. So next year, we are ready to get those scholars, get those forms filled. It's not an easy form to fill, it's like nine pages long, it's, it's a pretty extensive form that families have to fill out. Any other questions?
Just that Kids Place is, is still onsite at each of the elementaries, or did we?
Nope, it's, yep, it's still onsite, it's on.
Yeah, a classroom for, okay.
One more question. So this one is regards, you had mentioned also that the revenues are down because there's other programs that we're financing. And you had mentioned towards the end that you're looking at venturing into, what are the more recently retiring or soon to retire people, what kind of activities they would like to see in the programs? Are you also reaching towards that middle age, these 35 to 45, 50-year-old, to see what kind of programs they also would like to see in the program, to level out some of that revenue that's?
Well, I have our adult enrichment coordinator right here, and this might be, if that's okay, Lynda, do you mind answering that on, you would come up here? So I'll, I'll take this time right now to actually introduce Lynda Ashy. She is our adult enrichment and volunteer coordinator of, for community education, and then, so she'll answer that question, and then she's going to talk about the volunteer program, and then she'll introduce our community volunteer.
Thank you. So you were asking, what are we doing to enfranchise an adult enrichment, a little bit younger's enrichment student? Well, I network with my colleagues throughout the metro area and throughout the state to find out things that are popular. We have done in the past surveys through the Minnesota Community Education Association. They have funded outcome surveys to find out, why do people take community education, and what are they looking to get out of it? So in the broader sense, we're doing those things. In a community-by-community basis, a lot of it is just simply driven by registration. Does that answer your question?
It does, but I was also getting back towards, also, as you were talking, I was thinking there's also other ways that we can tap our community as far as events that are going on, like the Ice Room Social. If there was a booth there, hey, fill this out, tell me what you want to have, what you don't want to have, type of thing?
And Community Ed in general is at a number of community events, so thank you, and I'll make sure as an adult enrichment coordinator to actually have a survey.
We actually did a survey for the senior program, and we'd had it at the spaghetti dinner a couple of weeks ago. And it seems so easy, but we were passing, we were trying to pass it out to all these people, just walking by, this captive audience of people, and we, even one of our seniors was out in the, in the cafeteria, giving it to people, and we got 12 back. And so it's, it's, it should be easier than that, but it is, it's kind of like, you know, having to pull teeth. But we, but that is a good idea, and I think we're actually going to start doing more between adult enrichment and senior program too.
And we do have a lot of good data from people who we currently serve, as to how they feel about the offerings and what they would like to see. It's the people who we don't currently serve, what might we be doing, that we need to do more to, to get that information. So we'll talk a little bit about the volunteer program now, and thank you for having me here to highlight the volunteer program. I would like to begin by thanking all of the volunteers in our schools, both the parents and the community members who volunteer, including those of you on the board who are volunteering. The impact is tremendous, and I am just so fortunate to work in this program because it's energizing on a daily basis to hear those stories of success from around the district. This slide that you see here gives the overall, it's just a current snapshot of where we are in this year. So you can see the distribution of volunteers throughout the district, and in the one-time events, that includes approximately 80 staff members from Cargill. We have a partnership that began last year with Cargill to bring their staff members in, they allow them to leave during the business day to come over, and those are mostly one-time events, including the middle school day of service. So Cargill is working with us again this year. Do you have any questions about the general snapshot of numbers of where we are? And I am so pleased to have a program participant, Barb Bloom, with us tonight to talk about her experience in the program. She's volunteered in St. Louis Park Public Schools for nine years now, and Barb, thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome. I started volunteering in St. Louis Park when my granddaughter became a fourth grader at Cedar Manor. That was nine years ago, she's a senior this year at the high school. Our kids attended St. Louis Park schools when they were growing up as well. I worked primarily as a math tutor, and fifth grade is about it, but it's okay. And, and it's some other projects that the teachers may have. I've worked with one teacher specifically for probably the last five or six years. I've worked with the IB Exhibition Program and art projects and just other activities that she needs a little extra hand with. The reason I do it is because I think education is very important. That's why I started volunteering when my granddaughter was in school, to show her that it was important. I work with a small group of students, I love getting to meet the students every year, new students, kids that I would not meet anymore in my age group, I don't have contact with kids at that age. I love having, seeing those moments when all of a sudden they understand something, and the light goes on in their eyes, or they go, oh yeah, I get it. Those are the moments that really make a difference. The teacher is very appreciative of the time I spend in the classroom, and every year they give me a little thank you at the end of the year, and the teacher says almost every year, you know, we need to thank Mrs. Bloom for coming and helping us this year. You know, she comes just because she wants to help, she doesn't get paid. And there's a collective gasp usually in the classroom, because no one can understand why you would come if you weren't being paid. But I do, and I love being there, and even though my granddaughter is graduating this year, I hope that I can continue to volunteer in St. Louis Park for many years to come. Thank you.
There's no more questions, that wraps up the community education report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, well done. So next on our agenda is Tom Marble, who's going to talk about the digital learning update. Tom Marble and friends, I should say.
He does have friends.
I'm in IT, I don't have a lot of friends, but I've got a couple.
Just do.
Board members, Superintendent Metz, thanks for having us here tonight. I'm Tom Marble, Director of Information Services slash Technology for the school district. Excuse me. And with me tonight is Angela Franzen and Nate Tangen, who are our two district, what are we branding you now? Digital Learning Specialists. We're getting away from talking about technology in general, because we think that when you talk about technology, it gets compartmentalized. What we're really going for here is we're, we're looking overall at developing an environment around digital learning in our district. So we've, we're going away from technology, they used to be called technology integrationists, so now we want to call them digital learning specialists. So this is the first time I've actually had an opportunity to come and speak to you since last fall, when we had our technology levy renewed by our public. And one of the main reasons that I get to come and talk to you is because of that support from our community. I've been in the district for 23 years, and the, the support in this community, specifically around technology, has been tremendous. So I wanted to make sure that we stage what we're talking about here tonight is, the reason we get to talk about it is because of the support of our community. We got our technology levy renewed, we got an increase in our technology levy. And since that was passed, some of the inevitable questions started coming at us about, you know, looking at what some of the other districts are doing around us, and when are we going to be doing those things? You know, namely, are we going to be giving our students devices? That is a question that we have yet to answer. However, that all plays into what we'll be talking to you about tonight in terms of creating this digital learning environment for our students K-12 and pre-K-12. So this evening, what we're going to try to talk to you about is what we've learned talking to other districts about best practices and what's working for them, where, where is our district at right now? What, and what are the things that we need to implement moving forward, and how do we get there? So one of the things we're going to be focusing on is our teachers. The key to creating the digital learning environment, obviously, is making sure our teachers are ready to go there and have the tools and the skills to create that environment. So this is a slide that demonstrates what is called the SAMR model. And at the bottom, and you work your way up, it's a substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition. And it gives you some idea about what each one of those levels means. You'll see that there's a line horizontally between augmentation and modification. Our goal is really to move our staff above that line in terms of their curriculum. We want them to be using digital tools, we want them to be creating that digital learning environment that allows them to get to that upper level of this model. Nate and Angela, you want to talk a little bit more about what some of those examples mean?
Yeah, the SAMR model's been around for a while now, it's standard-based. Oh, sorry. Let me get over there, sorry.
Need to use our technology.
That's right. Awesome. But this model's been around for a while, i- is our technology integration model, again, is standard-based, lots of resources out there for people like us to use when looking at staff and how we can get our staff really teaching with confidence and understanding how their lessons really can impact the drive for student learning, getting them to that higher level of, of owning their learning. So we know that even at the bottom level, there's great work being done, that without intentional effort of helping our teachers look at their lessons and helping them come up with ideas for how they can really embed technology and embed digital learning in their curriculum and in their lessons, that without that intentionality, we'll just be substituting always. We want to really help them understand how to move through these levels fluently, and really give them concrete ideas, and really start to create a learning environment and collaboration environment that's safe, that is focused on teaching as opposed to just using tools. We know that if you just focus on how to use an iPad, it doesn't really do anything for how that looks in a classroom with a lesson. So we're really embedding this model and using this model in with our coaching methods so that we can really help to create an environment where teachers are sharing their ideas, sharing what's working for them, and really coming to the table with their lessons versus being so worried about how to use something. So Nate has got some examples maybe of how that could look.
Well, I think the important thing to note is that we do have staff that are well above that line in redefining what they're doing with technology. And I think our intent, as saying digital learning specialist, is that technology's becoming a part of curriculum, it's becoming a part of everyday life, and we have, we've lived in existence where we say, it's technology, it's a tool. So when we first get that tool, substitution is a logical place to start. When we put smart boards in our teachers' room, they're going to use them very similar to how they might have used an overhead projector. That's an okay place to start. Now we start to think about that technology tool and start to shape our learning around it. How can we begin to augment? How can we start doing small groups with that interactive whiteboard? How can we modify that to have those kids leading that? So those are things that we can consider, and as digital learning specialists, we're going to, we want to invite teachers in and talk about where their lessons are at, how to help them grow that lesson and build upon that technology and that learning tool that they have.
And again, as Nate has stressed, we are going to have teachers who are all over this, and in some cases, substitution is okay. You know, it's, it's a starting place for them, it's, you know, in, in any given lesson plan that, that a teacher might be doing, they might be at substitution, and that might make sense for them, or they might be in modification, or all the way up to redefining how they're delivering their curriculum. So we conducted a survey, and we're calling it a climate survey, of our parents, students, and staff in the district, to really find out where they were at with their idea around digital, their ideas around digital learning. So we conducted the survey, and grades three through 12 and parents. The, one of the big things we were trying to find out is what access do they have to digital resources and connectivity at, at home and outside of school? What kind of foundational skills do they have around technology? And general attitudes towards using technology? Do they find that technology is something that is a useful tool? And of course, we also, as part of this survey, surveyed our staff. And we're trying to find out from this survey, and the survey itself is geared towards showing us where our teachers might be on that SAMR model. And of course, our goal, trying to get our staff teaching and using curriculum that's above that line. So we're going to move into some slides here, which are some of the results of that. Yep. Yep. So, and each one of these infographics we're going to go through, that are kind of results of the survey, has a lot of information on them, so I think we'll, we'll try to pause for each one, so if you have any specific questions about these slides, go ahead and throw them at us, and we'll see if we can, can answer that for you. So this one, the first slide, is survey results around professional development, and Nate and Angela are going to talk a little bit more about that.
Great. So as Tom mentioned, when we're looking through these slides, we invite, we'll invite questions while we're looking at the infographic. A couple of takeaways that we had as a digital learning group were that, the first place we need to start with professional development is believing that what we have works and enhances learning. So when, in the bottom left, you'll see that it says, 90% of the staff believe that technology enhances student learning. Without that belief, there wouldn't be a need for Angela and I. So, so we know that that's where our kids are and where we need to meet them. The other one that stood out to me is that the 17% for digital citizenship skills, it happens in our schools. So that number looks low, that it's not happening, but I think we need to be more intentional about establishing that as a goal or an objective or learning targets when we're presenting that to students. It happens, and sometimes it's a learning experience where it's like, hey, we got to be careful, but we need to be intentional about labeling it, that this is considered online bullying. These are things that we need to consider when we're creating these digital citizens. Is there anything? And then also, I think the important thing that we see with staff is when we look across the top and we see 74% of our staff is interested in learning about multimedia skills. That, that gives Angela and I direction as, as to how we want to move forward. It's the way a lot of our students are learning. I think when we sit in this room, I can say with fair confidence that all of us have looked up on YouTube how to do something at some juncture, and it's pretty remarkable that you can find a video for just about anything. So when we see that teachers want to use multimedia skills, I, I think when you see that strong 74%, is they really want to meet the students where they're at, and it's our job to help them with those tools and help them get there. So is there any questions or thoughts, considerations that you have when looking at this infographic?
So this graphic really focuses on staff and their role as a 21st century teacher.
I'm just looking ahead and comparing to the student responses, and that's a perfect, perfect. Your statement about wanting to meet students where they are, or where they're at, is perfect.
So as we change the slide here, and if you kind of look to that upper right quadrant, you'll see where our students assess themselves in the multimedia skills as opposed to our staff. And this is an interesting slide and interesting comparison, because our, our digital natives that are walking around with devices in their pockets and, and taking pictures and videos and posting them to Instagram and wherever else, you know, they're, they're fluent in this. Those of us who don't necessarily have the need to be posting stuff to Instagram every five minutes, you know, need a little more help. And as Nate, as Nate mentioned, I will admit, I looked up how to tear the dash out of my 19... And as Nate mentioned, I will admit, I looked up how to tear the dash out of my 1999 Chrysler minivan on YouTube, and there's actually a video that shows you how to do it. Got it done in about 20 minutes. It was great. So, again, if you look in the upper left-hand of this, they're defining foundational skills as things like composing emails. And you see how our students have kind of marked themselves lower in this area because do our students really email?
They know it.
They're texting their Instagram. There's a whole lot of other communication medium out there other than email and spreadsheets and things along that line. But again, in the lower left-hand corner of that, do these students believe that technology tools will enhance their learning and their daily lives? And a high percentage of them, obviously, said yes. And again, in the right-hand corner, they're marking themselves, low percentage, talking about digital citizenship. Again, it's about an intentionality and talking about this in class where that hasn't been there in, that intentionality hasn't been there. However, they're probably learning it, but they don't realize they're learning it in those teachable moments.
Definitely. And definitely something that is interesting about all of this is that we are facing a digital divide between teachers and students. And we know that there are several teachers that are very comfortable with technology and doing these things. We know that there are lots who are not. So, we need to somehow continue to build in where that's we're working on really developing that plan on how we help teachers be comfortable with the fact that their kids do know more than they do. They can be teachers of themselves. They can let kids teach them how to do things and creating an environment where teachers are feeling more comfortable getting out there and sharing things and trying new things as well.
Any questions about this slide? Anything jumping out at anyone?
One thing that did jump out to me on this was the fundamental skills. At 31%, you know, doing spreadsheets and things like that, that's kind of an important piece to doing things on.
So, then we talked about school infrastructure. And we kind of went back and forth a little bit about how to interpret some of this slide. We're showing that a high percentage of teachers were saying that they have, they can access computers or devices when they need to. We're saying, does that show, does that tell us something about where the majority of our teachers are at that maybe there's not the demand that we should be seeing out there? Of course, the glaring one in the middle, the 36% about internet speed. Well, we'll talk about wireless as we go along here towards the end of our presentation. But I think wireless is a piece that is a definite need in our district to be improved. And we've got a plan moving forward, and we'll talk about that. Speed is always a wonderfully subjective thing. So, can it ever be fast enough? That's the question. Any of the other pieces that you wanted to touch on here?
Well, Tom had mentioned that 69% for availability over half the time for students to be, to be using a device. And I think when we go all the way back to that SAMR model, when we look at the way devices are being used in that 69%, is that mainly we see it in substitution. And again, that's where we have to start. But a lot of times when we think that when we have an iPad cart in a classroom, that that iPad, "I found this great math game." Now, that substitution could have been something that maybe we've done with flashcards in the past. So, that's again where we, when we move forward, we think about what we're going to do with our staff to develop those skills, like how can we now use that tool to augment our teaching? How can we modify it? Or how can we redefine it with that tool?
When looking at this slide, we noticed this is looking at our students as 21st century learners in our environment, as a 21st century learning environment. So, when you think about 21st century skills, you think about collaboration and moving our learning from inside the classroom to the cloud and collaborating outside of school, inside of school, opening wide those classroom doors. So, these skills line up, or these numbers, I should say, line up a lot with where we're at, with what we have invested in, how we have been working with teachers. We know that we need a strong foundation, K-12, for how that looks. And so, we're really working on that intentional plan of building into staff and working with them. We also know we need a really strong platform of an online environment such as a learning management system, which is a big word for a system like Moodle, which we've used at the high school, where we have a platform that we can all build activities in, communicate with parents and students. And that's been a part of our model as well as we're moving forward.
And this last infographic here is about how teachers and students responded about their access to devices and the internet outside of school. So, on the left side is teachers, on the right side is students. And one of the things I want to point out here is that all of the students who took this survey took it here at school. So, this isn't, you know, this isn't something where, oh, of course, it's an online survey and the people who answered the questions, of course, they have access because they had, you know, had access to internet at home and took the survey. No, all of the students that took the surveys took it here at school. So, that was a, obviously, a significant number for us, looking at 96% of our students saying that they have access outside of school to the internet. And then, you know, the 92% having access to some sort of a device.
Along that line, last, at our last board meeting or prior to it, we met with some high school students as we do every year. And it was a small group and hardly a representative sample, but 10 or so high school students. And during the conversation, it came up a few times that not all, you know, not everybody's got a computer at home, not everybody's got access at home. And that just was sprinkled throughout. And then there was a comment about a teacher, I think, having sent a text message reminding them of an assignment that was due on Monday. And so, I thought, "Well, is that another question we have to watch out for that is sending text messages?" And they looked at me like I was from the last century and said, "Well, everybody's got a phone." And sort of, we didn't ask smartphone, but I think that probably was a lot of them. And in the way that students say, "Well, everybody." But they, it clearly was a question that in their mind, you wouldn't even ask. And I don't know if that's how a lot of these students are getting access at home through smartphones or what. They were quite clear there was a distinction between handheld and something at home.
Right. And more than likely, the devices that they do have internet access on are some sort of smartphone device or portable device that fits in your pocket. The challenge with that is we've gone through some experimentation here over the past year or so with bring your own device, bring your own technology here at the high school is not every one of those things works exactly the same way. And how do you pick the resources that fit this screen as opposed to a screen like this or a screen, you know?
And writing a paper is a totally different project.
Doing it with your thumbs, yeah. That would be quite a challenge. So, we're going to go through a couple of, another quick slides of parent results. And I'm not sure if you guys wanted to talk about these at all, but they're fairly self-explanatory. You know, high belief in the fact, again, that technology can enhance student learning, that they're interested in finding more about how that has an effect on their child's learning in school. And that they believe that technology enhances their daily life. Again, high percentage of people responding. So, after looking at where our students, our parents, and our staff are at, and all of the information that Nate and Angela and I have gathered with talking with our neighboring districts and districts around the metro area about different things that they're doing, we really can synthesize our mission down to these three statements. Digital learning is about creating anytime, anywhere learning, trying to break down the four walls of the classroom, the traditional classroom, and giving students access on their time. Personalized and individualized instruction. Again, giving the student the opportunity to play a higher, a more significant part in their own learning. Having the teacher become a facilitator of the student's learning. And also, creating dynamic versus static curriculum. So, these three key points are what we're trying to develop as a learning environment across our district. And of course, if we do this, we'll be developing the 21st century skills of all of our students. The graphic on the side is the key elements of the ISTI Nets Program, which is the International Society for Technology and Education. And one of the buckets on that graphic is talking about the 21st century skills that you've heard us talk about a couple of times tonight. We want to make sure that our students are all prepared for the workforce of the future. They need those 21st century skills to become prepared for the workforce of the future. We want them to access a wealth of knowledge. And obviously, we want them to exceed the highest standards that we put forward. So, if we do those things on the previous slide, this is what we hope we're developing as the picture of our students moving through our school system. So, one of the key elements that we're going to be doing immediately and moving into next school year is that is a K-12, initially, a K-12 adoption of the learning, a new learning management system and learning management platform, which will allow us to do all of those things we're talking about, creating anytime, anywhere learning, having a launching pad for our teachers for gathering their digital resources and having their students come to that place and then launch out to other resources that they gather and find. And this is going to take place of our teachers' websites across the district. Our current website system will go away and the learning management system will be the presence for classroom teachers across the district. And it's also going to be this point for us, for these two, to be building professional development and collaboration across schools for teachers. So, there's a lot of work to be done in this next year. One of the things we're trying to put teachers' minds at ease is that we're not expecting this to happen on September 1st. We talked about, Rob shared with you, the Professional Development Academy this summer. Some of this will be taking place then. But really, it's going to be about individual and small group work with Angela and Nate, with teachers across the district, getting them moved from the current teacher website platform over to the learning management platform over the course of the next year, making sure that they're comfortable, making sure that each one of, each teacher has an opportunity to do some exercises in there and have success using that. And that is going to lay the foundation for everything else that we've been talking about here today.
So, is there going to be like a clear expectation from the teachers of what they need to do after a year?
Yes. We have a three-year implementation plan that we've seen from a couple of the districts that have implemented the last couple of years. So, we've got clear expectations for them. And for sure, we know that that one year of transition time is adequate and really necessary to allow teachers to dabble in there. Some will begin to communicate with parents. The expectations will be very clear to everyone out of the gates so that there is plenty of time for them to feel comfortable with those tools. And then moving into fall of 2015 and on, we'll have a little bit more increased expectation so that by the time we hit two years in, everyone will be online, we'll have the app running, everything will be ready to go integrated with our programs.
And then the other critical piece of this, which I alluded to earlier, well, this is our timeline for the learning management system, probably selecting a product this month, getting it onboard, getting the technical pieces up and running, having Nate and Angela start developing professional development training around it. And then, as we mentioned, over the course of next year, being very methodical about going through and making sure that every teacher has built their presence in this system and is using it to the expectations that we've set for us for year one. The other critical piece in this, of course, is wireless infrastructure. As more and more devices are coming into our district and even, you know, possibly setting the stage for looking at one-to-one or greater BYOT rollouts across the district, we need to have a significant improvement and investment in our wireless infrastructure. The infrastructure that we've had up to date that's in place has really been kind of pieced together as funds had allowed over the past couple of years. Again, the additional dollars that we got approved by the voters last fall are going to allow us to make a significant investment in that this year. So, the timeline for that, again, is we should have an RFP out on the street for this by the end of May and hopefully bringing a bid award back to the board by the last meeting in June. Then we'll be looking at, hopefully, starting installations in August and throughout next year, trying to get those things into place across the district. And just finally, professional development, obviously, critical next step. And we've focused mainly on that in our presentation tonight, getting our teachers to a place where they feel comfortable, they have the tools that they need to make sure that we can move forward with creating the digital learning environment that we envision having across all of our schools. And I should mention before Lisa's looking at me across, I said K-12 earlier. Eventually, we'd like to get our pre-K on the learning management system as well. So... So, this is just a final slide of some of our timeline, again, simple timeline of how we want to get there. By this time next year, we need to have a new three-year technology plan written and submitted to the state of Minnesota. As we are aligning that with a new strategic planning process that will be happening here in the district, and everything we've talked about here, our mission and all that, will be the core of what our technology plan will be and hopefully will be a key component of our district, or our district strategic plan moving forward as well. So, when we're sitting here next year, we see, we believe that we are in a much stronger place to be talking about that next leap forward. Are we going to be going one-to-one in some of our schools? Are we going to be expanding devices? In which way? Where does it make sense? So, next year is going to be a very exciting year of change for us. And we hope to be back here next year, sharing all the great things that we've seen happen. So, any questions that we can answer for you?
Looks like we're all good to go. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Look forward to having you back with the updates.
Thank you.
Just a comment.
Sure.
I guess, getting some feedback with our technology here. But this is obviously, and I'm speaking for myself here, but maybe the board here, just really critical because I think we're really starting to recognize that technology is what's going to engage our students. You know, they're maybe far ahead of the game than a lot of us. And I guess I appreciate a couple things. One, the community support. Hopefully, we have some dollars now to make the investments that we need. But secondly, the thoughtful approach. While technology, we got to move fast because by the time you make a decision, maybe it's time to go another way. So, I think we're talking three-year plans instead of five-year plans on our... So, I think we're talking three-year plans instead of five-year plans on our strategic plan, for instance. But, I mean, this is something we really care about, want to get it right because the dollars are significant. So, when you make an investment, we want to make sure it's right. Now, I hate to say it, but there may be other districts in the state that maybe are a little ahead of us, and I know that you've been out looking and searching and hopefully learning what other districts have, where they went wrong and what seems to be working. So, I just want to, I recommend that we keep, you know, utilizing that and hopefully have some, I think, partners around who at least give us some advice and learn. But, I mean, this is a critical component of what we got going forward. So, appreciate the thoughtfulness and the work and looking forward to hearing more and more as we go on here, so, thanks.
Sure. One of the things I would mention is that we are, we do have those teachers who are ready to go, and we're looking at how we can help them keep going over this next year as well and not feel like they're, you know, being held back at all. So, again, it comes down to funding. What can, what can we do to give some additional opportunities to teachers who are poised and ready?
You know, as a follow-up on that, I know there are certain things going on that we've heard before, flip classrooms and how some of those advanced teachers are, and I don't know if it would be you or collecting the data, but it would be helpful if we could find out student performance on, you know, things that are working and that aren't. I mean, you know, we've got to try things to know if they work. And, we've heard anecdotes and, you know, maybe it's not happening globally enough to make some determinations, but.
That's very true. And actually, when we have looked at many other districts, a lot of the districts that are now backpedaling because they handed out all the devices and then we're not seeing the test scores improve like they were hoping or we're trying to link it directly. We know that there wasn't an intentional focus on professional development. They really forgot about how to invest in their staff. And so, they just assumed by giving the tools that there would be that advancement in learning. But, now, a lot of those districts are backpedaling and trying now to bring learning back into the teacher focus. Well, there's, those devices are already out there, there's been habits formed. So, we really find that the districts that have been successful, that are seeing the improvements, that are still not, it's still very difficult to take it to a number. But, it's coming, it's coming that way, that they are building that really solid foundation so that when the devices come in, there's a real strong desire for staff of all, across all levels, that they want, the taste is there for it before they get the tool. And, that's really what you want to kind of create, that desire moving forward, especially amongst those staff members.
And, to speak about our intention is that we wanted to start with that climate survey. We need to first, you first need to start, where are you at? Where are we at as a district? And then, from there, the LMS as a portal for parents and students to meet teachers digitally. And then, what tool best fits that environment? Because otherwise, you need to start with that foundation, that platform to build up. And, through collaboration with other districts, it's funny, Angela and I hear them often say that they're envious of the place we're in. I mean, so you might see in the paper that they went one-to-one, but they're saying, wow, I wish, you know, you guys have a survey, you have the data to move forward, you put in place a learning management system. Now, what device is going to fit that to help those students and teachers really, truly engage in digital learning?
Well, I agree, and that goes to kind of the thoughtful. We did this kind of last round when we had some dollars and what instruments were we going to buy? If you remember, we had a thoughtful process. So, I do appreciate that. But, the worry comes in, you know, we're going to spend a lot of time picking this LMS. Are we thinking that enhancements would go to that LMS or are three years, are we going to be searching again? I mean, I know that you can't quite foresee that, but obviously, that's a concern.
Well, I think one of the, one of the answers we have to that is, we want to be very upfront about the fact that we want to make a long-term commitment to a product because nothing will turn our staff off faster than saying, well, we're going to try this out for a year. And then, we'll see. Now, we want to make a commitment to this because also what we've seen is adoptions like this, you need to see data over three years, is, you need that longitudinal data in at least a three-year cycle to really see if the improvement is happening. You're not going to see it in a, in a short one-year timeframe or even a two-year timeframe. You need to see it out over that. So, we want to make sure that our staff understand that we're going to make a commitment to a product and so it's not going to go away next year so they've wasted their year learning something that's no longer there.
One of the things that you saw there was that little focus on dynamic versus static tools, and this is where that comes into play. We heard it said that you don't teach a person how to drive a Chevy, you teach a kid how to drive a car. And, you don't want to focus in so tight that you can't move and move across these things. So, when we look at dynamic tools, they have to be tools that no matter what device you have, that you can access it, that you can see a similar experience that you would have if you're at school, if you're at home. So, if you think then about tools, that can be that dynamic. That's what we want to invest in so that we don't get locked into something that will outdate itself or that will become unusable in the future. We want to really build that solid foundation. So, out there right now, the world is our oyster when it comes to tools and the ability to find things that will work for what we have. It's pretty exciting.
I have a question too. So, based on the data, it looks like about 51 kids don't have access to internet at home, based on this one here. Ninety-six percent, 1,200 kids, about 51 kids. And then, about three teachers don't have access to internet. How are you planning to address that or are you, or is that just a part of the 100% we're not going to capture?
Definitely a part of our process, for sure.
And, we're looking at everything we're doing here through an equity lens. So, how do we, how do we provide for those students who don't have? And, all of the districts that we've talked to that have gone this way have all dealt with that challenge in a different way. And, I think we'll find our own path through that, exactly how we will provide for those students. But, it's always forefront of what we're, what we're trying to do. Because, technology, and I just used the T-word, sorry. The tools are, that can be that great equalizer. And, so, we want to make sure that we have that as part of our plan moving forward.
I work for a high-tech company, and one of the things we try to do is measure everything just because we think that's important. I'm just really interested in how we can measure the technology and what it's doing to close the gap. We have some master teachers out there who do a wonderful job, and I just like to make sure that when you come back, I mean, you're smart people, you know how to measure things. I just like to see a baseline and say, how is this helping us close the gap in our, and that's one of our critical measures, that we're closing the gap. I just like to find a way to say, hey, how is technology helping us do this?
Very hard to do and isolate technology as the reason for why this happened. I think that's why we are not focusing on the technology, not focusing on the device, but focusing on the learning environment that we're trying to create. And, there's many elements that go into that. And, measuring that is one of those things that can be quite elusive. But, I think we need to determine, you know, through our, the survey that we gave here is going to be an ongoing thing. We'll probably give it two more times over the next year to see our growth. And also, the tool that we've used is specifically tied into how, into strategies of how we can move our staff up that SAMR model so we can see our staff specifically making improvement of that. But, coming back to how do you, how do you relate that to standardized test scores or how do you show that in terms of achievement gap? I think all of that comes into play as our equity work is moving forward in the district as well. And, we're, we're looking at how do we change our learning environment to be more inclusive, to be bringing those students along that are on the, you know, on the cusp of achievement but aren't quite there. It's, it's one of the biggest things that we struggle with when we talk about this.
My critical point here, though, is that if we don't find a measure and some way to connect, some kind of correlation, we just went out to the voters and they voted in, was it 17 million this time? There's a lot of money. And, that, this is one of those places, very, very isolated because we went out specifically for a technology levy, we said it will help, and we said, here are some of the ways it'll help, and our critical measure is closing the gap. And, we better use some of our smart people to make the correlation. And I think the voters require that.
And, and one of the areas that we're talking about being very intentional is math and strategies around using these technologies in math instruction. So, those are some of the areas that we can definitely see if the way that we've changed the things that we've introduced have made improvement.
So, I think we have really excellent examples of islands of excellence where we're already doing this. And, what my expectation is, as we move forward, is we're going to make these little islands into big continents. And, that's where the individualized learning component for each kid, it's like, I mean, I know for special ed we have IEP for each kid, but I see the digital learning environment as being the way to help each kid get the tools they need for their own growth. You talked earlier about how the kid and the family can be a partnership in this, and that's going to be the tool to do it. And, I think we have enough evidence in our Islands of Excellence where we're already doing that. We just need to scale it up.
That's excellent. That's why it's no longer just the three of us in a meeting, we have Carrie Ross now joining us from Curriculum. We're becoming very much a team of, across the board. It's not just, like I said, an island of technology, but it's an island that's turning into a continent across several areas because there is not just one little piece that's going to make this successful. It's going to be all of us together investing in how our teachers are teaching and how we're helping them be facilitators for learning, facilitating how their digital environment looks and really giving them the tools that they need to engage kids and help them drive how that output might look. It's huge.
Thank you very much. I love the passion you have for the work, and we need it so, thank you. So, next on our agenda is the Teacher Tenure Evaluation Plan Discussion. We're going to receive information on proposed plan changes for the St. Louis Park Teacher Tenure Evaluation Plan, and I'll let Mr. Metz kick off this discussion.
Thank you. While our teachers are setting up, I'll give a bit of an introduction. This year, beginning next fall, we need to have a tenured teacher evaluation plan in place. We've been evaluating probationary teachers for years and years and decades and decades, but the new tenured teacher evaluation plan will be brand-new this next fall. This plan has been developed over the course of the entire year in a collaborative effort from teachers and administrators working together. And, what you're going to see tonight is a draft of that plan. We're not asking for any action to be taken tonight, just a time to view. But, coming back at our next meeting, we'll be asking for action to approve this plan. The teachers also have to approve this plan, so they're examining it and they'll be voting to approve as well. So, I have a different version of the handout that you received in your packet that they're going to be showing you. It's an updated version, so I'll pass that down. And then, I'm going to ask the three teachers that are here to introduce themselves and where they teach, what they teach, and then, we'll have them take it away and present the plan to us.
My name is Kate McDonald. I teach first grade at Susan Lindgren. I'm also the Professional Development Chair for PAT.
My name is Illa Saxena. I teach third graders at Susan Lindgren Elementary School and have been in the school district for over two decades now.
I'm Kay Carlson. I teach all-day kindergarten at Peter Hobart, and I've been in the school district forever.
So, I'm going to start us off with just some background. The state, our great state of Minnesota, has passed a law so that we have a teacher evaluation process in place. We currently in our district have a way to evaluate new teachers, but not for continuing contract teachers. So, as a group, we, by September 1st, either have to create our own plan or use the state's pilot model, for which there's, there's that too. So, the group of us who've worked very collaboratively over the last eight months or so with Rob's leadership, and I know you touched on this a little bit, Rob, but just to give a little bit more background, this group really has been very, has really had all of the stakeholders, the teachers, pre-K through 12, PAT leadership, district leadership, has, have been working really hard on a plan that we feel strongly will work, but that is also a manageable one for us to do from the teacher's perspective and from administrative perspective too. So, the law requires that we begin in the school year 2014, 2015, at this juncture at least. I've heard that there's legislation out there that might ask us to, anyway, there's a lot out there. But, as of now, September 1st, it must include a peer review, some sort of peer review process. We're, as a district, fortunate that we've already had some peer review in place for quite a few years. So, we've been mindful of using and keeping in mind the language that teachers are familiar with in that process. So, as we've written our plan, we've kept that in mind. It's a three-year review cycle, which means that not all teachers will be reviewed every year. So, over the first three years, a third, a third, a third. And then, individual growth plan, that means that a teacher for a given year will have set a goal based on student achievement and then be able to evaluate in the mid-year and then at the end of the year. There will be a summative evaluation done by a trained evaluator. Data must be given on student engagement and growth, longitudinal data, not just a snapshot. So, over a three-year period, we're hoping to collect the data so that there's a broader picture of the teacher's performance rather than just in one particular year. Professional learning communities need to be part of our plan, staff development and teacher improvement and a support process for teachers who might need more support. We've come together with a set of beliefs. We believe that this needs to be a collaborative process to win the support of not only our teachers, but the evaluators themselves. We know that, or we believe that continuous growth and improvement for all educators is very important, that we need to have a clear and consistent evaluation process. We don't want teachers to be worried about one thing that might happen during this that might have a negative impact on their overall evaluation, that it's really the big picture, not, not a small snapshot on any given day. We believe that high-quality teaching with a focus on equity has a positive impact on student achievement and will help us in closing our achievement gap. And that, the other important part of this is that, as it says all over the document, this is a draft. And even when it's not a draft, we still believe that it deserves continuous review so that we can improve upon it.
I'm just going to take us through the two main components of the, of the draft of our plan. We have component one, which is on teacher practice and student engagement, and that component is divided into two parts. I guess I should say, there's percentages here, and we talked a lot about the percentages. We're trying to match what principal evaluations look like too. That was kind of an important piece here. So, we were trying to come up with parts that went in line with what principals and how principals are moving through their evaluation process. So, that's where these components came from. Component one, teacher practice, is the bulk of it, and this includes a formal evaluative observation by the principal. That observation would have a pre- and a post-meeting. The principal or evaluator may do informal observations that would, would be documented. And, it also includes a reflection on the peer observations. And I think Kay's going to talk a little bit about the timeline. We want to keep in mind, it's a three-year mind, it's a three-year sort of plan, so like Kate mentioned, there are, a third of the teachers would be in this sort of summative evaluation time period, once every three years, with their, with their principal evaluator. Okay, the second part of this is, deals with student engagement and student engagement surveys. So we are hoping to have teachers give surveys at least two times per year for the students that they teach, and the survey tool would vary based on the grade level. We have some good models out there that we can look at from other districts, and we're going to work to create something that, that works for us here. And the teacher would write a reflection on their survey results, and this would all kind of be included as part of Component One. Are there any questions about that right in the moment? Okay, then I'll just keep going, I don't know if you're on, I'm not sure if you're on page five, there we go, okay, very good, thank you. There we go. Student growth and achievement is the second part. The first part was about the, what is the teacher doing, and what is their practice like, what is the, what are the data from the students that the teachers are instructing? The second part has to do with goals and, and data based on that. And these goals are, are district goals, we have a district goal, that teachers are already familiar with, knowing about, we write one every year, we write more than one every year, so we'll have one district goal, we'll have a building goal, again, teachers are already familiar with that, buildings make a goal every year, and reading math, they make two maybe, maybe three, so we'll have a building goal portion in this component. And then that Individual Growth Plan, or PDP, I think it maybe says on one of your documents there. So, all of this data would be compiled over three years, and be looked at when, when a teacher is in their, their summative evaluation year. There would be a reflection on the assessment data from each year, and each achievement goal, district, building, and individual goals would be kind of evaluated or scored individually or separately. Is it good? Should I keep going?
I have a question about that.
Please ask me.
A little clarity. So, this is going to back up a little bit, forgive me for that. So, there's approximately 350 teachers?
Yes.
So approximately 115 will be evaluated every year? And, so, someone would gather all this information that you just outlined, over a three-year period, and then they would be evaluated, basically, right?
That's, I think that's, that's, that sums it up pretty nicely.
My real question is, why not every year? I know that the tests are, are, come through once a year, and then that's a year lag, and all this other things?
Yep.
But, why not the 350 teachers every year evaluated over this, so that we know where each individual is at any given time?
So, let's see, to answer your question, we talked about this just before coming here, and we realize, obviously it's a draft, so we, we wrote down on Component One, highlights of what the principal would be doing. The Teacher Development and Evaluation Plan has to include peer review. So a teacher in any given year is going to be observed by their peer three times a year, or in their evaluative year, observed by a peer two times a year, and one time would be the, sorry, we'll now take off, I guess, in a few minutes. So in the evaluative year, observed by a peer two times, and observed by their principal for the other time. So every teacher is being evaluated three times. Every year, the teacher would compile the data from their, you know, the district goal, the building goal, their individual goal, that already happens. So we kind of, because some of these things already happen, we maybe need to articulate it better on this paper. So, teachers are having, having observations every year, it's not just a third that would be observed, or having to have these conversations, it's only one time every three years by the principal.
But the principals do informal.
And the principals do do informal, go ahead Kate.
Yeah, and I guess I would just add too, that because of the numbers of teachers we have, and the few administrators we have, it really isn't, it wouldn't be manageable to have our administrators evaluate formally every teacher every year. And so this way, we've worked it out, so that there is a review process every year, and that data and information is gathered, so that in that third year, the principal can review all of it, and not just have a snapshot of the one year, but really have a picture of that teacher over a period of three years. It's a, it's a more manageable way to do it. I don't think our administrators would be doing anything else if we asked them to only do that.
And then that, I'm, I'm going to call it an Individual Development Plan.
Sure, thanks.
So their, their, their development plan, is that with the principal and the teacher together, where am I going, kind of a conversation, and then you mark out how that works?
So, when we look at, that's in Component, Component Two, it's really three goals, one's a district goal, set by Mr. Metz, and the, probably at the data retreat, another is a building goal, that's usually set by a group of leaders within a building, that last individual goal is made by the teacher, by the teacher maybe working in their team of teachers, by the teacher reflecting the students that they have that year, and the work that they see that they need to do. So that's where that one component comes from, does that help? So typically, a teacher makes a goal, we, we already do this, so we're, again, like Kate mentioned earlier, we're trying to keep some of these parts similar, so it's not so overwhelming as we move through this, this new process for us. Teachers already make a goal, so a teacher or a group of teachers might say, we're working on increasing math fluency, we're going to have our baseline data, we're going to work at it all year, we're going to check in mid-year, make sure we're on track. I thought I could get, you know, a 20, 30% improvement, am I on track in January? Okay, let's keep going, let's see how far we can get. So it's an opportunity for the teacher to really focus on something that applies to them that year, okay?
The other part of that, too, is that while we currently do every year make these individual goals for ourselves and our, our group of students that we work with, the thing that is new with this plan is that it is shared with your building administrator each year. Right now, it's shared with our peer observers, our bills, who come in and observe us three times a year, but with this plan, that goal, that individual goal for a teacher would be shared not just with their bill or the person who's observing them, but also with our principals. So they would be in the loop, so to speak, on that, whereas now they're not necessarily.
Go ahead. Since we're on the component, or we were on the component two, when you, when you were looking at scores from three years, I'm curious about whether you're looking at the teacher's class scores that's being evaluated, or whether, which scores are being looked at?
Sure. So I think the district, the district will have a goal, I don't know what the goal might be, but the district will have a goal, maybe closing the gap on MCA test scores in math, and that, that, when we get the data, after those, after those results come in, we can see, did we make our goal, did we reduce that gap by whatever percentage we thought we might? We either did, or we didn't. Everybody's going to get the same sort of score in that regard. We either meet the goal, we don't meet the goal, maybe we partially meet the goal, maybe we even went below what our baseline was, and that will, that will generate a score. That's one piece. The building goal will be somewhat the same, so maybe we'll say, you know, 79% of all students will pass the MCA three, I don't know, something. We'll make, we'll have a goal, including this number of students of color, and we either make the goal, or we don't make the goal. All these, all these goals, whether we make them or not, will have a score, one, two, three, or four, and those are the scores that will be saved, and kind of looked at, and the goals will reflect whether or not, did you meet your goal, or didn't you? I'm not sure if I answered your question entirely, it's late in the day for me, so go ahead, go ahead.
We've talked about multiple measures, and whether it's MCAs and WEAs, the FAST testing in the early elementary, and then tracking those scores over the three-year period, multiple measures.
And I get that, but I'm curious about whether the concept is, your particular classes, say you have 20 kids, let's just say that.
That would be the case for my individual goal, yes.
Not for the district.
Not for the district or the building goal.
Okay, and I thought that might be it, and that's what I was trying to get a handle on, thanks.
And then I'd like to add on to that, it would be nice, nicety, would be to understand each teacher's individual goal for said score, MCA score, understand what that is, and roll that into a building score, as opposed to having a building score in, that's not obtainable sometimes, because sometimes I see these numbers come through in presentations from the schools, and some of the numbers just don't look obtainable. I mean, 14% now, and you're going to hit 86. It's really not obtainable in one year. So, it would be nice to see the rolled-up real goal, and then how you did against the real goal, except, as opposed to the state mandate that you have to be at 100% at this time.
And that's really where we can get some flexibility with an individual goal, because then you can make a real goal, make a SMART goal, we call it, something that's strategic and measurable, and, you know, bound by time and that sort of thing. I think, yeah, I, thank you for that. All right, should we keep going?
Yeah.
Am I going? Okay, so, we're on the part about ratings and teacher support, so you can see we have four descriptors there, distinguished, proficient, basic, and unsatisfactory, and each component, Component One and Component Two, would be given one of these, one of these ratings. Again, we're thinking, you know, holistically, and how this is, this is working. We don't have the language quite figured out yet, we have some language that maybe we are borrowing from Minnetonka for the moment, but we're going to work out descriptors for these indicators here. This language of distinguished, proficient, basic, and unsatisfactory, unsatisfactory is not unfamiliar to many of the teaching staff, they've seen that before, so that's helpful in that regard, we just need to flesh out the details of that.
That's also from the state plan.
And that's also from the state language, yeah. This, yeah. The teacher support plan is, in the event that a teacher receives a score of a one or two, they're in the either basic or unsatisfactory category, then there will be a teacher support plan kind of set into motion, and that would include having the, that, that teacher go through the year three sort of evaluative, summative evaluative sort of year all over again, so that we're not leaving them for three years with no support, we're going to kind of catch them, support them, and check up on them in the, in the very next year. Okay? And some of those supports might include additional professional development, or an opportunity to observe proficient or distinguished teachers. Are there any questions about that?
Okay. Kate? The timeline, as we said, it is a three-year cycle, and in years one and two of the cycle, the teacher has three peer evaluations or observations. Again, there would be a, a pre-conference and a post-conference meeting about the observation, and also what we're calling the Individual Growth, we currently call it the Professional Development Plan, that would be submitted. In my building, a lot of us do it by team, so that we are taking ownership for all of the students at that grade level, and for raising student achievement for all those students to a certain level and percentage, and that is shared with the administrator of the building, and then a minimum of two student surveys that would be looked at in those years. Then year three, as we've talked about, would be the evaluative year, the data gathered from the first two years, along with the two peer observations in the third year, and the trained evaluator, principal, administrator, evaluation, the PDP, those, all that would be compiled as documentation, and that would be discussed with the building administrator. Again, there, before the administrator, there'd be a pre-discussion, post-discussion, the principals have data right now, because of the way we've been reconfigured, we now have three years' data, test data on our, on our students. And then, there would be a summarizing meeting with the administrator at that time. Then the next steps that we have to do, the school board, as well as PAT membership, must approve the plan, the survey tool that we're going to use, pre-K, 12, ABE, those need to be refined, we have some good examples that we're looking at. The observation form needs to be edited, we're going to include an equity goal in each of the four domains, so that we're embedding that into the observations, and we must develop a system to document all of this. We've talked about several methods of doing that, we had technology right ahead of us, that's one of the methods we've, we've discussed, and talked to Nate about developing something for us, so that it's manageable.
I'm sorry, I missed part of that, could you repeat that one? Is it developing?
The management system, we've talked about electronic portfolios, that we can, as we have the data, we can just put it right into the portfolio, there may be some other systems out there, we've talked to Nate, he's been part of the committee, part of the, the collaborative group that we've worked on, and, and technology, and saying, you know, how can we facilitate this, so that it will be easy and not cumbersome for staff to do? We don't want to spend all of our time gathering and organizing data.
Yeah, sure, you should have an electronic shared file, so you can move them along as the things happen.
Exactly.
It would be very nice to have that for students also, and have individual development plans for them to move along with them.
Right, and that's under discussion, so. Any other questions, or?
Just a kind of more funnel, fundamental one, I mean, you were saying we have a lot of this in place, and I think that's as a result of QComp, so what is the relationship between this new statute requirement and QComp, what we've been doing?
These are really-
I think we have something in flux with QComp now, right now, too, so where are we on that?
Well, these are two separate entities, this statute says this has to be in place September 1st, or you default to the state plan, and because our staff has been so familiar with ATPPS or QComp, that's why we are trying to keep a lot of the language similar, so that we're sort of meshing or melding, so we're not giving them a whole new vocabulary and everything to get used to, and, so, but, but we, this is something we have to have in place, so.
But is there additional funding for it then, or, I mean, is that?
Yeah, let me jump in and try to explain that, and the three of you help me out. So when you look at the year one, and year two, and year three timeline, in year one, each teacher will have three peer observations, that's QComp, we're doing that already, so QComp is funding that, lead bills are coming into classrooms and observing peers three times each year. In year two, this would call for three peer observations, we're doing that already, that's QComp, so QComp is funding that, funding the lead bills to come in and, and do those three observations. And in year three, there's only going to be two observations by their peer, which is still QComp. So the change here is, in year three, that third and final observation will be done by a principal, and will be the summative observation of the three-year cycle. So, QComp is really part of, all the way through year one and year two, and up until the end of year three, that process, you can kind of think of that as the QComp process, but once it gets to the end of year three, where the principal does that formal final evaluation, and they get a chance to look back at all the data from the previous three years, and make that summative evaluation at the end.
And I suppose the one, one piece to add to that is that, QComp legislation, the ATPPS in our school district, we also have had practice with the- in our school district, we also have had practice with the professional development plan, that individual growth plan, and that, that is all kind of, already has been historically sort of funded, as Mr. Metz mentioned, through Q Comp. So there's compensation for that.
So just to add one, two more links here, which I think are important links, is up until now, the Q Comp observation process and the process, peer review process, and the principal performance review process have been two totally separate entities, different forms, different ways of looking at things. This is bringing them together. So the way, the forms and the materials that the, that the bill, terminology we use and Q Comp uses, will be much the same or exactly the same as the form that the principal will use at the end of the, at the end of the process. It will have an equity component built in, and the goals will be aligned for the first time also. So when the district goal is set, which will be a closing the achievement gap goal, then each building will set a closing the achievement gap goal, and then each individual teacher will set a closing the achievement gap goal. And that is also something that's new. So when the principal sits down at the end of that three-year process, they're going to see the results of those goals, the district goal, the building goal, and the teacher goal from year one, the district goal, the building goal, and the teacher goal from year two, and the district goal, the building goal, and the teacher goal from year three, as well as the student surveys and all the reflections that the teachers are doing.
We should have had you just be up here and do it.
No, 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 see, we're ready for that now, because we needed to hear everything you said first. I'm curious about why you would have students surveyed twice in a year. I mean, they have all the testing that goes on, and maybe that's not a big time-consuming thing, I don't know. But that just struck me as to why twice?
I think the idea behind it was to try to gather kind of-
Baseline.
Pre-, baseline, like, pre-impressions, because there's student engagement. So we're trying to find a way to measure student engagement, knowing that that's a key, but it's also a requirement of the law that we do that. So our thinking behind it was to try to come up with a baseline and then at least one more time during the year where we've had the students, given them a chance to give their feedback. We, we don't want to, you know, have the students have a great day and have that not be reflective of the year, but also conversely, have a bad day and have that be reflective of the teacher's performance, too.
And it's hard for me to stay quiet, you can tell.
Yeah, go on.
Also, at the secondary schools, teachers may have a whole different group of teachers, first semester to second semester. And it, and it gives them an opportunity to be surveyed in a variety of courses. So they may teach an advanced AP course, and they may teach a beginning-level reading course. And they can get feedback in a variety of settings also.
And we said minimum because when you get your baseline data, then you want to have some time to try some things and re, you know, resurvey to see if it's making a difference or not. So.
So the teacher will do their survey, or would someone come in and do a survey?
No, we'll do them. We'll do them.
And these are likely short survey assessments. These aren't two-hour tests, so, yeah.
The, the ones that we looked at, I think we looked at models from Minneapolis, and I think for the youngest students, it was eight questions with smiley faces. So, you know, it wasn't that complicated. Um, yeah, right. So that, that, we want to make it as easy for students as possible, recognizing springtime is a testing season, there are other testing seasons throughout the year. Certainly we want to just find out, though, if, if the students feel themselves are engaged in their, in their work at school.
I think it's extremely important. I just think it is something you can assess with a few questions, and it sounds like that's where you're headed.
Yeah.
I'm glad it's there.
Definitely, that's part of our next step process.
So I just want to be clear, because I sort of wondered how this impacts what the principals are doing, because we think of them as the educational leaders, that's our mindset, I don't know if it's yours, but you're, you're, you're the feet on the ground, make it happen, and, you know. And so I'm wondering, this, we're talking about formal assessments here, but I wanted to be clear that our principals are in classrooms and seeing teachers teach far more often than once every three years. I don't want anyone at home to get a misunderstanding.
Yep, absolutely. It's just that they would not base their formal evaluation on a walkthrough or a ten-minute snippet here or there. It's, again, it's, it's based on those three years, what they, what they gather, and then the, the real formal observation as well.
Well, this is exciting. I've been wondering what's been going on, and a lot of good, hard work has been going on. So thank you very much. We look forward to getting the, whatever, whatever comes back to us.
Well, thank you to Rob for being there and facilitating as well.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is the policy development. First reading is policy four-seventeen chemical use and abuse and policy four-nineteen tobacco-free environment. Go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you, Chair Gores. These two policies are being brought to the board. These are on the MSBA's mandated policies to be reviewed annually. Four-seventeen chemical use and abuse was last reviewed October two thousand and eleven. We did not make that one last year, so we're bringing that forward now. Tobacco-free environment was reviewed October two thousand and twelve. Nothing has changed, nothing's changed, MSBA, these are the exact same format and language that the board approved on these last dates.
All right, I don't see any questions or comments on these two particular policies.
So is a, pardon my ignorance here, but is, there we go. Is an e-cigarette considered tobacco?
I believe that's in discussion right now in, in a lot of the legislature, but the way that the old policies or the former current, former and current MSBA policies, this is, this is their language. I can maybe-
Yeah, if you could-
Ask some folks to see if that's still-
Check, check with MSBA or-
Does say smoking includes any other lighted smoking equipment, sounds.
I believe we talked about this when we approved it the last time it was, but, but I certainly will find out if that's considered tobacco.
I was at an event and the organizer made it quite clear when students were gathered that there would be no E-type device use on the premises. So I don't know if that was Andy's statement or, anyway, it was in the school facility and it was, an announcement was made that you are not to use this device in our building or on our property.
So we want it included? If it's not, we need to add it? I think that's the gist of what I'm hearing here today. All right, next up, next up we have policy four-twelve expense reimbursement as a second reading. And we looked at this last time, it's going to come up on the action agenda shortly. Is there any discussion that anybody wants to have now? This is, we've had it before and it's, there're no, is this one new?
No.
This is a second reading of this policy, but this was a brand-new policy last year, and it was the first time we adopted it was last year.
And it's the recommended MSBA policy?
It's identical to the MSBA policy, yes.
See, no questions or discussion. I'm going to move on to the consent agenda as soon as I can find it. Is there, and I note on the consent agenda, I thought I saw retirement. Yeah, there, there is one, it was a correction from last time. Last time we had Kathleen, was it Weiss? And it appears that from our high school, she's retiring. Is there any?
We see.
Yeah, we see. Thank you. I always hate it when I don't know how to pronounce their names, I feel bad about that.
I will just comment that I worked with Kathleen and it was fun. So I got to see her a lot, special ed paraprofessional at the high school, very good worker.
Very good. Well, we appreciate her service and her help to all our, all our students that she's been with us over time. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by Julie, seconded by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
One abstention. And then next on our, is our action items, where we're up to the approval of a second reading of policy four-twelve, the expense reimbursement. It's recommended that the school board approve policy four-twelve expense reimbursement as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carrie's seven-oh. Next is the approval of the tentative contract for CAPS, which is our Clerical Secretarial Association of Park Schools. It is recommended that the school board approve the employment contract between Independent School District two-eighty-three and the CAPS bargaining unit for the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school years as presented, who will be presenting. Go ahead, Sandy.
Yes, we had a great contract that came from the CAPS unit. Basically, there was very limited or insignificant language changes. There was a few date changes as well as a few human resources policy changes, procedure changes for days. Other than that, it was mainly monetary changes, which is within our parameters that were set before us.
So is there a motion to approve the CAPS counter?
So moved.
Moved by Joe, is there a second? Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Carrie's seven-oh. Next up, we have approval of the tentative contract community education coordinators. It is recommended that the school board approve the employment contract between Independent School District two-eighty-three and the community, community education coordinators for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, and two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school years as presented.
Again, another good contract from the community ed coordinators. Very limited language items, mainly a date changes to get us up to date. Other than that, mainly monetary changes, which was within our parameters.
Do I have a motion? It's moved by Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Carrie's seven-oh. And next and last on our action agenda is approval of the tentative contract Sparks, the support personnel assisting and reaching kids. It is recommended that the school board approve the employment contract between Independent School District two-eighty-three and the Sparks bargaining unit for the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, and two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school years as presented.
This is another great contract with its Spark unit. There was a few changes in language items, limited within the contract itself. We did add a memorandum of understanding for a PTO pilot project, which is going to be reviewed annually, every so often annually, to determine whether this is something that we want to keep on going. But we certainly feel that this is a win-win situation for the membership as well as the district in providing an opportunity to create some flexibility to be able to get substitutes available. Other than that, we had some monetary changes, which were within our parameters.
Do I have a motion to approve the Sparks contract?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carrie's seven-oh. Well done on getting those contracts wrapped up and done. I'm very pleased, and I'm sure the people that are in the units are pleased. I'm sure we're all pleased to have that piece of work concluded. Thank you for all your good work.
Just, how many outstanding ones we have left? How many groups?
I mean, I mean, I think there's, we're probably about halfway through is what I'm going to think at this point. I mean, we got a lot of individual contracts still remaining, so it's pretty hard to determine how many, but we still have about a handful of actually gru-, actual groups that we have to get through.
And Sandy, isn't it pretty typical that we typically get the teachers' contract resolved first and then the other ones follow?
Yes, that's usually what happens, and, in most cases, that's what happens.
All right, so now we're up to communications and transmittals. Karen?
Thank you very much. So early on in the meeting, Rob referred to the high school band concert, which was Thursday night, and it really was reflective of asset number five, caring school climate. Steve Schmitz and the bands worked really hard together to create a wonderful program and a very moving tribute to their band colleague, Evan McManus. So it was a really moving event to be at, and the kids performed beautifully, and I really want to commend the teacher, Steve Schmitz, and the band students for working together on that. On Thursday night here at the high school, that'll be Thursday, May fifteenth, also May sixteenth, May seventeenth at seven PM, and May eighteenth at one PM, the middle school students, about ninety of them, are presenting the Seussical musical. It's going to be a lot of fun. I was at the rehearsal earlier tonight, and it's very colorful and very energetic, so I hope people can come out. Tickets are six dollars for adults and four dollars for students.
My favorite event, one of my favorite events is Ice Cream Social is on Sunday, this Sunday, the eighteenth. I think it goes from-
Two to five.
Two to five. Thank you.
Wolf Park.
At Wolf Park. And we'll be there. Some of us will be here.
I just got an alert from the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. This is a, normally not a budgeting year, but there is funding available still for education. The House and the Senate are attempting to come to some sort of agreement. It is not too late to influence our legislators. And so the Association is urging all of us to make a call. The easiest one to make is to the governor, and I will give you his number. It is six-five-one-two-zero-one-thirty-four-hundred-three-four-zero-zero. Give the governor a call. We would like to see him use his influence to make sure that we get an increase to the formula this year. And in this year where originally there was a fairly large surplus and now it's been chipped away at, but there is still room in it for increasing the formula, the basic formula for education, and that's the kind of calls we need to the governor. So if you have a chance, this is a Monday night, it's a great night to do it. Tomorrow's a great day to do it. Call the governor and urge that increase.
Looks like that's about it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Jim and cited by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, thanks, everyone. Anybody opposed?
Okay.
Well, I'll go home.